Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August 13th, 2024 Borough Council Meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council Meeting, both in person and virtually, and we're glad you have joined us tonight for this meeting. During our public participation and public hearings portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and staff will unmute you and announce your name, and you'll be able to make comment. Those joining us in the room in person will be able to queue up at the podium, and we just ask that you sign in on the sheet, provide your name, and whether you're a borough resident or business owner. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers in person, and then we'll move to those joining us remotely. We do have two public comment periods scheduled for tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end, and we just ask that you limit it to once per a participation session. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and get started with tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crackerfield, start us off with real call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager here, assistants here, chief is here, solicitor's here, you have a forum. Thank you very much. With that, we have no presentations on tonight's agenda, so we'll move into the first round of public participation. Again, we just ask that any members of the public joining us on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally, and then any members of the public joining us here in person, if you want to make your way up to the podium, and we just ask that you sign the sign-in sheet and provide, introduce yourself as either a resident or your name, and whether you're a resident or business owner. So, any members of the public wishing to make comment, particularly on items not on the agenda? Okay, well, with that, we'll close the first round of public participation. We will make one announcement here tonight, immediately before this evening's council meeting. Council met in an executive session to have attorney-client privileged advice and discussion related to zoning hearing board application for 200 Kimberton Road, and also to discuss matters of personnel related to the police department. Covered? Moving on, we'll move on to section five of tonight's agenda, which is our consent agenda. Are there any items on tonight's agenda or on tonight's consent agenda that you have any questions, comments, or looking to withdraw from consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. To communications and council participation, any updates for our August meeting from our council members tonight? Ms. Berkeley.
I always have a couple things, but it's been a late month. I did want to thank the Civil Service Commission, we've been working, and thank you for the mayor or the manager and his guidance. We do have a new solicitor, and we've been working on updating those, so that's something that'll be coming. Thank you to staff, we had the first annual Blueberry Bash, a special thanks to Sweet Brew and Michael Weiss and his family who owned Sweet Brew, they really championed that and went to every business to get them engaged. It was really fun, I got to be a judge, I had a big bellyache after all the goodies that I had to judge, but it was wonderful. Unfortunately, we did have to postpone National Night Out, but thank you for Chief Marshall, that will be kind of folded into the first responders barbecue on September 3rd, so keep a date out for that. And we tend to get a lot of the negatives, so I just, Kelly and I were talking about this earlier, we got a really good compliment about our staff on the second floor, Donna and Marilyn, they're, if you've ever dealt with them, they're amazing to deal with, and they deal with a lot because sometimes people have questions, or they have concerns, or they're upset about a parking ticket, and we got a lot of comments and compliments about them recently, and I always, when people have questions that I can't answer, I know it's something that they have to call for, direct them, so I just wanted to kind of give them a shout out.
Any other council communications for this month? I have one, and I just, I'll speak about it broadly, I think, I think we moved here since in the early 80s, and I think that was the time in which 500 block of Bridge Street looked its best considering since then. So, in recent years, the condition has rapidly diminished in its appearance and general upkeep, and I just would like to ask staff to examine whatever tools possible to mitigate the issues that, I mean, it's just a boarded up stretch of houses at this point that don't seem to be moving forward, so I would just ask that staff examine whatever opportunities are at the government's disposal for improving the condition of life there, so. Not as happy as Blueberry Bash, but I'll leave it at that. Any other comments from council this month? With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report, Mr. Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in the chambers and those who are joining us virtually. A couple of things to update, this last month, we want to congratulate the Colonial Theater on a very successful 25th anniversary Blob Fest, it did make the New York Times, so everybody knows about Phoenixville and our role in the famous movie The Blob. If you haven't watched it yet, I'd encourage you to do so, it also makes a small cameo appearance in the movie Grease. The Kimberton Fair also took place last month, special congratulations to all the caregivers who were, who received recognition through Miss Kitty's Care, they had a special event for caregivers, which Ms. Berkeley actually attended. Also, very special congratulations to Alianza's to Phoenixville for the multicultural festival which took place last month, and then, as Ms. Berkeley said, the Blueberry Bash was a bash, it was excellent, and we would highly encourage you to look for that again next year. Thank you, especially to our staff and to Mike from Sweet Brew for helping to coordinate all of that. A very special congratulations for the upcoming month, welcome to all of our new school district teachers who have already started and are getting ready to begin the school year. Also, just want to wish all of our students who are returning to college a safe return, and just wish all of our residents a very happy and safe Labor Day. A couple of things to note from the police department especially, I want to give some very special recognition to Lieutenant Brian McIntyre and also our Corporal Kyle Place, both of which attended our Northwestern University Command School, which was a several-month program and specifically around the latest techniques in law enforcement, so congratulations to both Lieutenant McIntyre and Corporal Place. Also, we want to have special recognition to Lieutenant Brian McIntyre, as well as Officer Stabilo and Randu, who have been participating in Camp Cadet. Camp Cadet is put on yearly by the Phoenixville State Police, sorry, we're a little smaller, the Pennsylvania State Police put that on every single year, and it's just a great way for law enforcement to be engaged with young people and also to encourage young people to consider careers in law enforcement. We do have, and for anybody here in Phoenixville who is interested in law enforcement, we do have a citizens' police academy, which we accept 15 residents into every, we do it a couple times a year, but that will be starting up in September. So if anyone is here in the chambers or watching remotely and would be interested in learning more about our police department, it is a multi-week program, you can visit our, us on phoenixville.org and go to the police department section, or you can find it on Facebook, but that will be on Thursday nights for a number of weeks. So that's starting in September, open to 15 residents, first come, first serve, if you're interested in learning more about the Phoenixville Police Department. As always, thank you for making this an incredible community to live in and to be part of, and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business, or sorry, appointments. Under tonight's agenda, every month, we like to ask residents who are interested in being appointed to various boards and commissions to reach out to their council people or borough staff and otherwise to express their interest, learn more about the positions. We have over, right around 100 volunteers who take part on various boards and committees and commissions that we can't run this local government without your help. Currently, we have vacancies on Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission, and Tree Advisory Commission. Our police and personnel monthly meeting is where we discuss these items, and it's a very casual, friendly environment to learn more about any of these openings. So, anybody joining us remotely or in person, please, if you're interested, reach out to any of your council people about any of these openings. Under news business tonight, we do have an application to review for the consideration of a ZHB application, and I will turn this over to our solicitor.
Sure, so, the borough has received a zoning hearing board application from Flagship Pennsylvania Propco LLC related to the property located at 200 Kimberton Road. The application requests a special exception to engage in a car wash operation pursuant to section 27-301.2B1 of the zoning ordinance. As you know, council recently changed this use from a conditional use, meaning that council would have held the hearing on this application, to a special exception, meaning instead that our zoning hearing board holds the hearing. As a result, tonight's discussion of the application is for informational purposes only, and I believe we have the applicant's counsel here, so I'll turn it over to her to briefly describe the project.
Yes, thank you, Bernadette Kearney from Hamburg Rubin, here on behalf of the applicant. As you'll see on the screen is a conceptual building rendering of the proposed car wash that will be located, as the solicitor indicated, at 200 Kimberton Road. We do also have present with us tonight Kestra Kelly from BL Companies who prepared the plans, and also John Lombardo on behalf of the applicant. The special, it's a special exception request for the automated car wash, we do meet all the criteria of the CD zoning districts, so we're not asking for any zoning relief in reference to the dimensional requirements. We are keeping and reskining, for lack of a better word, the existing Rite Aid building that is there, and the accesses will remain the same, and this is a car wash where you'll go in, one tunnel, the car will be washed, and you have the option of going through two other tunnels, someone will dry, and I call it slightly detail your car, not the four-hour detail. So it's, the approach is less likely to use the vacuums that are on the side, you do have the right to do that, but the other two tunnels or for the employees to vacuum, wipe down your car. I don't know if you have specific questions in reference to the application that we can address?
There any questions from council?
I just wanted to clarify, you talked about the second tunnel, they are only doing that activity, drying and so forth, to the exterior of the vehicle, they will not be doing interior cleaning and so forth?
I take it like my car's dusty, you dust it, you vacuum it. That kind of detailing, unless, John, there's something else they might do.
Interior vacuuming and cleaning windows. Okay, so, so both full service as in interior and exterior clean of standing, standard things versus, but you have the option, they don't automatically do that?
You don't have to do it, right, correct.
Any other questions from council? All right, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, council is not required to take any action on this item, as it is, you know, this was informational. If none is taken, that means that the borough will simply allow the zoning hearing board to handle the hearing in its normal course.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Seeing no motions on the floor, we'll move on to item B.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment for patrol officer to Elizabeth Moran based on our standard conditions.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, we'll move on to section 10 of tonight's meeting, we have public hearings. First, on the docket, we have a motion to adopt an ordinance modifying or amending Chapter 27 zoning, Part 6 supplemental regulations, what is council's pleasure?
Well, before we do that, we have to recess into a public hearing and have a public hearing, so with that, I will entertain a motion to recess our public meeting and enter into a public hearing on the proposed amendment to sections 27-202 and 27-606 of the borough's zoning ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in a public hearing. This ordinance amendment is to allow occupants of properties in the town center and neighborhood commercial districts to display sandwich board signs on the public sidewalk. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on July 29th, 2024, and August 5th, 2024. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library and Pottstown Mercury on June 12th, 2024 for public access. I'll quickly introduce the following exhibits into the record for this hearing. B1 is a copy of the ordinance, B2 is an action memorandum from the Borough Planning Commission dated June 14th, 2024, unanimously recommending that the borough adopt the proposed ordinance. Exhibit B3, review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated June 26th, 2024, finding the proposed ordinance to be consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Exhibit B4, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated July 1, 2024, finding the proposed ordinance to be acceptable with consideration of its comments. Exhibit B5, a copy of the public notice for the consideration of the ordinance. Exhibit B6, we do not yet have in hand, but it will be the proof of publication from the Pottstown Mercury for the two advertised dates. And exhibit B7, the letters from the borough to the Pottstown Mercury and the Chester County Law Library dated June 12th, 2024, providing copies of the ordinances for public access. So, as council may know, to support the local business community, the borough has recently allowed for the display of sandwich board signs on the public sidewalk. However, our zoning ordinance does not actually permit any signage on the public sidewalk except for temporary event signage. So, the borough realized that we wanted to continue to allow these signs, but we should update our ordinance to match our practice. In order to do this, we had to add sandwich board signs to the zoning ordinance's definition of terms, which is what we were doing with the amendment to section 27-202.t1. Then, in part 6 supplemental regulations, section 606 signs, subpart 5H of the zoning ordinance, we are adding language to permit sandwich board signs as a type of temporary sign in accordance with certain common sense guidelines that match the borough's current expectations. For example, some of these conditions are, sandwich board signs must be brought indoors overnight, sandwich board signs shouldn't be taller than three and a half feet, and ADA accessible use of sidewalks should not be negatively impacted. With that, does council have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance Yes, Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, thank you. I'm, I read the county's letter, review letter, and it said about the requirement, the phrase "measured in a straight line, six feet on either side of the sign is unclear and should be clarified," and a plan view sketch could clarify this requirement. I, I looked at the ordinance, and I can't, I can't see what's not clear about this, but I don't know if that's, if there, if there is a way to clarify that, if anyone has ideas on how to clarify that, if a drawing is required, and if so, if that's a substantive change in the ordinance as advertised or considered a minor edit.
It would be a substantive change, I tend to agree with you, I think it's clear, but because it's a substantive change, it's, wasn't something that we considered trying to amend at this point, and then re-advertising, our thought was, if we do decide that we want to examine that and potentially clarify it, it was probably better to get this in place to make sure that we are allowing sandwich board signs in concert with rules that allow us to allow sandwich board signs, and then we could address that in the future.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Yes. Any other questions or comments from council? As this is a public hearing, I would now entertain any public comment on this ordinance amendment from members of the public who are here in person. Seeing none, are there any members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, I would then close the public comment period, and I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now that we are back in our public meeting, I would entertain a motion on the proposed ordinance.
Yes, so I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 27 zoning, Part 6 supplemental regulations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to thank staff and yourself for getting this together quickly, thank you to the policy committee for getting this together quickly, it became quite an area of concern and frustration for some businesses, and I kind of got the bulk of that frustration, so I appreciate everyone acting quickly to try to make things as fair and clear as possible.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance passes eight zero. And with that, move on to new business, or excuse me, public hearings, item B, and I will entertain a motion to recess our public meeting and enter into a public hearing on the proposed ordinance amending the borough's official zoning map to rezone 15 tracts of land to MI mixed-use infill district.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are now in a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the borough's official zoning map. Could we put the map exhibit on the screen? And while you're doing that, I'll, I'll start my spiel. So this ordinance is to enact a zoning map amendment, which would rezone 15 properties along the Schuylkill River between French Creek and our sewer plant to the MI mixed-use infill district. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on July 29th, 2024, and August 5th, 2024. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library and Pottstown Mercury on June 12th, 2024 for public access. I'll introduce the following exhibits into the record of this hearing. Exhibit B1, a copy of the ordinance, which is attached with its attached legal description and map. Exhibit B2, action memorandum from the Borough Planning Commission dated June 14th, 2024, unanimously recommending that the borough adopt the proposed map amendment. Exhibit B3, review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated June 26th, 2024, finding the proposed map amendment to be consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Exhibit B4, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated July 2nd, 2024, finding the proposed map amendment to be acceptable with consideration of its comments. Exhibit B5, a copy of the public notice for the consideration of the ordinance. Exhibit B6, proof of publication from the Pottstown Mercury for the two advertised dates. Again, as with the last hearing, this is not yet in hand, but will be an exhibit upon receipt. Exhibit B7, letters from the borough to the Pottstown Mercury and the Chester County Law Library dated June 12th, 2024, providing copies of the ordinance for public access. Exhibit B8, affidavit of posting of notice of the proposed ordinance, and exhibit B9, affidavit of direct mailing of the proposed ordinance to affected property owners. This ordinance effectively proposes the rezoning of properties along the eastern boundary of the borough's Town Center District, and the MI District is seen as a good transition from Town Center to the RI District and other districts, which, if you look at our current zoning map, the borough has already done on the western end of our Town Center District. These properties are identified as Chester County UPI numbers 15-9-157.1, 15-10-3, 15-10-4, 15-10-5, 15-10-6, 15-10-7, 15-10-8, 15-10-103, 15-10-104, 15-10-105, 15-10-105.1, 15-10-106, 15-10-123, 15-10-124, and 15-14-404. The current zoning of the properties is as follows, three of the properties proposed to be rezoned to MI are currently zoned MG District, nine and a half of the properties are zoned Town Center District, one and a half are zoned I Industrial District, and in the last two, I say half because UPI number 15-1-124 is split zoned between TC and I District, and one is zoned RI District. Having MI mixed-use infill in this location will also allow the borough to more easily modify the district moving forward in the event that a train station comes to Phoenixville, which we would expect would be somewhere in the area that we are proposing to rezone. This rezoning was initially discussed by our zoning task force as a good idea, and two of the affected property owners, being the school district and Brook Venture LLC, requested that the borough accelerate its consideration of the proposal from the zoning task force, as that process of completely updating our zoning ordinance is likely another 12 months away. In addition, adoption of this ordinance tonight will allow tweaks and changes to this newly rezoned area to be discussed by our zoning task force while it's still actively meeting to discuss its omnibus zoning ordinance changes. So this process would be in line with the comments made by the Chester County Planning Commission, and I'd say its most substantive comment was that we add and tweak the MI District to account for that potential train station, as the county knew that that was one of our driving forces in passing this rezoning, or considering this rezoning. So, with that, I know extensive background, does council have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance amendment?
Yes, Mr. Solicitor, if you could just clarify that, based upon your remarks, this does not lock in the uses that are currently envisioned, it will be approved, but because, and I happen to be on the task force, we can continue in the overall updating of our zoning, tweak certain aspects of this. I'm particularly responding to the PRPC letter, which notes that there would be a loss of the ability to have a hotel or bar as a permitted use, which was a little surprising to me. So you're, but you're saying is, while we adopt this MG for this, this mixed-use infill, that doesn't mean we can't further improve upon that or make further modifications as the zoning task force goes through its process?
That's exactly right, and I think not only does it allow us to potentially do that, I expect that we will. So this is kind of step one in a longer vision process.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Anyone else from council? All right, again, as this is a public hearing, I would now open public comment up to anyone here in person who would like to make public comment on this rezoning ordinance. All right, seeing none, I would then open it up to anyone online on the Zoom platform who would like to make public comment on the rezoning ordinance. All right, seeing none, I would close the public comment period, and I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now that we are back in our public meeting, I would entertain a motion on the proposed zoning map amendment ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Solicitor, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 27 zoning, to amend the zoning, official zoning map to the, of the borough, Phoenixville, to rezone to rezone 15 properties in the vicinity of and including the existing train line along the Schuylkill River to MI mixed-use infill district and all of those 15 zones you quoted in the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Kirk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. If I may, I don't think I voted for this yet. When it came out of policy, I cast the lone vote against it, and the reason is that I'm having a lot of difficulty rezoning that, the one whole industrial parcel on Second Avenue. I really, I feel strongly that this should remain industrial. One, if it's industrial, you don't have to worry about houses being built on it and putting a burden on our schools. School use, residential use is a very tax-intensive use. And industrial is a use that doesn't bring all of those new students into otherwise into the community. I'm on the PRPC, and we did send a letter stating that this is consistent with the regional plan. And I voted in favor of that. Regional plan is kind of wide lane there, kind of nice wide lanes. I don't know if you remember that Seinfeld episode when Kramer adopted a highway, and he painted the lanes really wide. Well, that's kind of Regional Planning Committee finding consistency with the plan. So, but I would also say that if this parcel were to remain industrial, that would also be consistent with the regional plan. So, like I said, a wide lane. The Chester County Planning Commission made the point in its letter, Number 5D, the borough should evaluate its remaining inventory of industrial zoned areas to ensure that sufficient areas will remain after this rezoning. I believe that after this rezoning, we will have one industrial zone left out on West Bridge Street, which is surrounded by residential areas. And I would think that you could put a different type of industrial on Second Avenue next to the waste treatment plant than you could on West Bridge Street next to the Little League Fields and those residential areas there. Secondly, and this comes to mind because I read where New York is looking at its zoning at this point, trying to create more affordable housing, but also trying to create pockets for industrial and manufacturing. And it seems we're going in the other direction. The other issue is proximity to the wastewater plant. I feel that the industrial zone there acts as a nice buffer between residential mixed-use and the waste treatment plant. I'm, I've been, I don't know if you know this about me, I've been around a while. I remember about 20 years or so ago, I think it was in Penn or Kennett Township, there was a subdivision that was approved, and residents moved in there. Now, I don't, you know, Southern Chester County is mushroom country. And you know what they grow mushrooms in. And I remember reading about a number of residents in this new subdivision going to the township supervisors and complaining about the smell coming from the farms, mushroom farms there. The township supervisors basically said, look, they were here first, and it's an agricultural use, so it is what it is. Now, some days, and I go to the compost site quite a bit. I wish I could get frequent flyer miles for that, but that's another story. But there have been some days I've been down there at the compost site, and it's pretty ripe. And I can imagine, if you put homes that close to our wastewater treatment plant, those people are going to be in here in seven, or 10, or 20 years, or whatever, and they're going to complain about the smell. So that's why I think, I and I think the rest of this, I think it's great foresight for the borough and the zoning task force to look at this, to be proactive in this zoning. I really think that's, I think that speaks highly of the foresight that we have in this borough. I just, boy, I just run up against it with that industrial, that, the one full industrial parcel, not the half one, but the full industrial parcel. And a second point is, there's a Superfund site right there, across from that industrial site. It's the old PMYC field. Kids were playing football on there for decades. And then they came, the EPA came in and said, hey, there's, that's a toxic site. So I'm, by extending this zoning onto that industrial site, you're extending a potential residential use across the street from a Superfund site, which again, I don't think is a good idea. I really, well, we have a motion. I'm going to make another motion, an amendment. I'm going to move that we table this and send this back to Policy Committee to excise the full industrial parcel in that. That's a motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on these motions? Well, there's
I did say motion to table.
There's a discussion on the motion to table.
Got it.
It went through Policy. You aired your, as I understand it, you aired the same concerns at Policy then. The makeup of the policy given is not going to change. So I think it's a it's an unnecessary step. If Policy Committee approved it 3-1 last time, I wouldn't, I don't know what further point would be to going back with it. So I would not vote to approve to table, and I would prefer to vote on the ordinance.
Well, and just to be clear as a matter of procedure, the motion to table is a competing motion with the motion to approve. So we are required to take the motions in the order that they were made. So we, the discussion can be on either motion. We're in the discussion period right now. Once it comes time to vote, we will take the voting in the order that the motions were made.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, this is one of those things that I feel like here we are making more land available to these huge complexes and more people coming in to crowd the roads more to, we already have a parking problem. I know that like, you know, if people live here, they're going to want to go downtown and everywhere else, making the parking really difficult as we try to get rid of more parking spaces. But I just think this is not like, I'm constantly arguing about not putting more residential areas around. And it's been promised to me that we're going to look at that and get it rezoned and changed. And here we are making it, we're just going to move it over to another area that's going to be problematic with the same issue. So I'm concerned that this is a potential problem for that, with all the same things too that Mr. Kirchner said.
I have no position one way or the other. However, I can tell you of the properties that are being rezoned, nine and a half are currently zoned Town Center. The MI District reduces the density that can be, or not necessarily the density, but the intensity of certain development. Three of the properties are currently zoned MG. The MI District slightly reduces the intensity of what can be developed on those properties. The industrial district that Mr. Kirchner's been talking about is a little difficult to compare. I guess you could say it would be a greater residential intensity, but a decreased commercial intensity. And then there's one parcel that's currently zoned residential infill, and that is the only one that the intensity would clearly be increased.
I'm of the polar opposite opinion about growth. I think it makes us stronger. I don't, you make an interesting point that you could already put residential development on much of the, many of the parcels here. These would all be within walking distance of our downtown. We have a commitment from our Comprehensive Plan, adopted several years ago, to become a 15-minute walking town, biking town. This, converting these properties to mixed growth would be consistent with that plan and consistent with that vision. I like that there are more people in this borough. I like that we are creating a greater infrastructure for more people. Mr. Kirchner's point concerning the burden that could be placed upon the School District because there's more students. We have a great School District, we get ranked very highly. It's an attraction, but I, I don't feel like we are hitting the limit. Everyone I engage with about, you know, the downtown street closures talks about they're so happy they are to be here, and they're staying here. They're staying here. They're not coming here for a few years and then, you know, buying three-quarters of an acre in a split-level house somewhere out, you know, up 724. So it's, it's, I feel very supportive of the need. I've always voted for the projects that are taking, you know, took Elin Down Shopping Center and turned it into residential in our district, you know. These are, these are things, what's happened at Steel Point is putting so many new people into this town, I celebrate it. So that's my, that's my perspective on why it's a good idea to do this.
Can I just answer that for a second? Because I we talk to different people clearly, because this is not the type of thing that I hear. And my concern is, I understand you want this to be a walking town. Not all of us can walk all that well. And if we actually want to go downtown, we have to find a parking space somewhere as it gets more and more difficult to do that. So I can't visit downtown. I can wave as I drive by, but I can't actually stop and go anywhere. I can't walk down the street and enjoy any of this stuff. This make, it's kind of discriminatory to make it so that only people can walk and can enjoy it as well as, as everyone else. It's just, it feels, I'm uncomfortable with that. I didn't like that.
Mr. Kirchner.
If I may, I don't know if I can say anymore on this, but I'll try. You know, doing away with the industrial zoning is, you know, I think land use is what's in the best interest of the community, not what the property owner wants, or, you know, maybe property owner in waiting wants. But, you know, we talk about Phoenixville's industrial heritage. And what does that mean, really? I mean, I knew people around my age who worked at the Steel Plant and worked at other factories in town. And, you know, we almost talk about it as an abstraction, but here's a parcel that if someone wants to do industrial, they can do it here. And it adds to our tax base. Again, I make the point, it adds to the tax base without putting children in our schools and driving up my school taxes. And I'm not one of those people who say, I don't have kids in school, so why should I be paying school taxes? I get that, but the more, the more housing you build, especially in areas that are industrial, the more burden you're putting on the schools. Now, as far as the mixed, the MI District, I think, I think that's excellent. On those other parcels doing that, proactive, I think that's an excellent move. Like I said, I run up against it with this industrial zone next to a wastewater treatment plant, across the street from a Superfund site. It would be a nice buffer. It has been for, I don't know, 100 years or so. And, you know, it, it could continue to be that way. But again, I think if you and build homes right up to the wastewater treatment plant, I don't know how many of you are going to stand in line to buy those homes, but if I, if I was looking at a home, I would think about that. Now, you know, the developers, they don't care. Once they build it and sell it, they get their profit, they run. But, you know, and like I said, I think that having that as an industrial zone is a nice thing to have in our back pocket in case someone comes in here and says, I want to, I'm looking for a place to put a factory. Okay, I said more, I don't know if I can say anymore, thank you.
My only retort, Rich, is as long as I've lived here, it's been an empty building. So all that aside, it would be nice if it was industrial. It's been an empty building, it's falling in on itself since I've, as long as I can remember. So that's, the industry doesn't seem to be coming for that parcel. That's my opinion on that one, that's all.
Anyone else from counsel? Okay, so guys made it complicated for me procedurally. Unless Ms. Berkeley, who made the original motion, would like to amend her motion, then we will consider the motion made by Ms. Berkeley and seconded by Mr. Weiss first. So all those in favor?
Point of order, point of order. I made a motion to table.
Correct.
And we discussed it, but we haven't taken a vote on that yet. So I believe the motion to table takes precedence over the previous motion.
I don't believe so. I believe motion to table is a competing motion with the motion to approve.
It's the last motion on the floor.
Correct. My understanding is that you take motions in the order that they are made.
My understanding is that a motion to table is, takes precedence. It's the last motion on the floor.
I'd be happy to look it up quickly if you can give me a minute. All right, the motion to table will be heard first. So with that, I will entertain a motion to table, or excuse me. Motion has been made to table the consideration of the ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion denied 2-2-6. With that, I will consider, or excuse me. We have a motion on the floor to approve the motion. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 6 to 2. All right. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me there.
Reopen a public meeting?
Close. We were already in a public meeting.
So we're back to it?
Back to it.
Very good. All right. With that, we will move on to Section 11 of tonight's agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. We have two to consider tonight. The first one is a motion to adopt a resolution officially accepting the dedication of Bill's sale or buy Bill's sale for the Phoenixville Senior Housing Project, Housing Development. What is council's pleasure on this item?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution officially accepting the dedication of Bill O'Sale, the Phoenixville Senior Housing LP improvements at 115 Buchanan Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this? This is just pertaining to the public improvements. This is not pertaining to the actual underlying ground rights, which is already the borough's ground. Just to be clear, right?
That's correct.
This is sidewalks and this is, you know, all those accessory.
Sidewalks, signage, that type of stuff that was installed as
Historical interpretation and things like that that were required.
The, I'm sorry.
Historical interpretation, the signage.
Yeah.
Yep. Just want to be clear, we're not actually selling anything. We're just accepting improvement. So with that, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. And second up tonight, we do have a grant, sorry. Yeah, we have a resolution authorizing a submission of a grant to the Pennsylvania Crime, the PCCD, which I always get wrong. This is for additional training. So what is council's pleasure, Ms. Berkeley?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a PCCD Drug Recognition Expert Marijuana Grant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Moving on to reports of boards, committees, boards and commissions. We start with Ms. Dugan with HARB.
Everything was already handled in the consent agenda.
Thank you. Move on to Planning Commission with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the project from the Planning Commission last month, preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for development known as 375 Morgan Street. Just a listener, if you want to describe it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So I see the attorney for the applicant here this evening, and I'd invite him to approach the podium. And while he does, I'll give that brief background. The application concerns a parcel of land located at 375 Morgan Street, which is more particularly identified as Chester County UPI number 15-9-572, which is currently improved with an existing three-to-four-story warehouse building and parking area. The applicant proposes to renovate the existing building into 29 one- and two-bedroom apartments, the reconfiguration of the existing parking lot, and installation of lights, planting, stormwater management facilities, and related improvements. The applicant has requested some waivers related to the existing slope and floodplains, environmental impact studies, and certain technical stormwater management adjustments. In addition, the applicant has offered to contribute funds to affordable housing initiatives and the downtown economic revitalization program in lieu of the dedification of recreational space. After reviewing the project at several meetings, the Planning Commission voted 5-0 with one abstention to recommend approval of the application. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Murray.
Yes, well, you did an excellent job summarizing. You're correct. We did submit the plan to the Planning Commission, made two appearances, ultimately received the recommendation last month. The plan also went before HARB. Our architect, Tom Carnaval, presented the HARB application, and that received a unanimous recommendation for certificate appropriateness, which Borough Council, I believe, approved last, last month in July with regard to the architectural aspects of the, the proposed project. No new buildings or additions are happening to the building. I believe a stair tower is being removed. Additional landscaping is being installed to the extent possible. As you indicated, the waivers are being requested are mainly with regard to this as an already developed site that no additional buildings are being built on, and it's to work within the constraints of the infrastructure that surrounds it that, that the waivers were requested. And our consultants are here if there are any questions the board has or council has.
Before there's questions, I would just quickly add that compliance with the HARB action memo is one of the conditions of the draft resolution. So Ms. Dugan.
Okay, I did see this on HARB, and actually it, it looks like it's an improvement. So, but my major question is parking. What kind of parking are we getting for this or proposing for this?
I believe that the parking provided, and Bridget can come and tell us exactly how many spaces, but it complies with the ordinance requirements for providing onsite parking for the project. And will you come forward?
Hi, everyone. Bridget McGuire from Wilkinson Apex Engineering Group. We're proposing 29 parking spaces, which is compliant with the zoning ordinance and the advisement of the Borough Engineer and Borough Planner.
Any other questions from council?
I'd just like, if you could, it was during the Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion which is kind of identified, but for the, for the purposes of the rest of the council to be aware of it. Could you just describe the stormwater management improvements that you're making? Because this is in the floodplain, and there was a waiver to be, get a waiver to build within the 100-year floodplain.
Yes, absolutely. So for the council's information, in existing conditions, there are no stormwater management controls on the existing site. So as you mentioned, Brian, this is in an existing floodplain. So the downstream infrastructure is already reaching capacity. So this is a large improvement in that respect as flows are being drastically decreased by the stormwater management practices that are being proposed. The applicant's proposing a managed release concept basin, which is designed in accordance with the PADP regulations and Borough Regulations, with the exception of the waivers that we're requesting. But in summary, this is a substantial reduction to the existing flows to downstream infrastructure.
I see that we added shielding or at least some blinds for the HVAC equipment. Are we still, is it still proposed to have 29 HVAC units?
And I believe there's both shielding and landscaping to the extent possible. I believe the units were spread out so there wasn't a cluster of them at the same spot. They were located and positioned so they're not on Morgan and Walnut Street, but in the sides of the building. And to the extent possible, using shielding and landscaping to screen them from the roadways.
Any other questions from council?
You mean to make the motion?
If council is ready, yeah, go for it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution officially conditionally approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for development known as 375 Morgan Street.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just have one, one note to make. I will be abstaining from the vote because a member of my family, media family, has retained the law firm of the applicant's legal counsel in an unrelated matter.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtner. All right, seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries 7-0 with one abstention. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moore, anything else out of Planning Commission?
Nothing, nothing further. And the August meeting was canceled due to no, nothing in front of the councils, so commission, so the next one will be the September meeting.
Very good. Mr. Kurtner, regional planning?
Not much to report, Mr. President. We did a consistency review of a Schuylkill Township, revision of Schuylkill Township's ordinance on the placement of gas tanks in proximity to residential properties. Too late for the Wawa that's going in, but it may be in time for the sheets that's going in because I seem to be getting conflicting information as to whether there's a plan for that or not. So I'll just leave it at that, but otherwise, not much going on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move over to Rec Board with Ms. Dugan.
Okay, these are going to be a list of things that were, are either coming up or like going on right now because our programs are just so extensive. I couldn't, we'd be here for, until tomorrow if I listed them all. So first of all, that we have the Chester County Food Bank, which comes to the REC Center parking lot every Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. till noon. And that goes until November 8th. There's yoga and live music. The REC Center Health and Wellness Room, Wednesday, August 14th, from 6:00 to 7:00. Pre-K Yoga and Mindfulness Summer Camp, the REC Center, ages 3 to 5, 8/19 to the 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Ramp Up Skateboarding at Mara Street Park on Thursdays, September 19th to November 14th. Fundamentals of Tennis, there's a couple clinics here. There's the Fall, 1, 2, and 3, and adjusted. One is on Saturday, September 7th to the 28th. And then the second one is October 12th to November 2nd. And the third one is October 30th to November 20th. Soccer Shots at Patnadal Field, Tuesday, September 3rd to October 15th, and Saturday, September 7th to October 26th. Fall 2024 PBRD Youth Coed NFL Football League. This league is a two-to-two-and-a-half-hour weekly commitment, and Week 1 of Training Camp will begin on Sunday, August 25th for ages 5 to 16. T-Bird T-Ball League Jump Start Program at Patnadal Field. That's Saturday, September 7th to October 26th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Women's Volleyball and Rec and Power are Mondays and Thursdays, 9:16 to 12:05. Yoga Programs at the REC Center Health and Wellness Room, Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:00, and Thursdays, 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. Keegong at the REC Center Health and Wellness Room. That is Fridays from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And finally, the Pickle Ball Clinic, Universal Rackets, Rackets at Fisher Park. And that one is September 19th for beginner and intermediate from 5:00 to 6:30, intermediate from 6:30 to 8:00. And Saturdays, August 3rd to 31st, beginner 9:00 to 10:30, beginner, intermediate, 10:30 to noon. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. We'll move to Mr. Carmoneda with Tree Advisory Commission.
Tree Advisory Commission met this month. We continue to discuss ramping up our tree planting efforts in between our volunteer plantings, staff plantings, and we're discussing contract, contracting out some planting. We have been planning for our fall tree planting, which is going to include some larger trees in Reeves Park. And we're particularly excited about potentially getting a stump grinder to grind out some of the tree pits in town, which will allow us to replant Main Street quicker with some of those trees we recently lost that we're all upset about. And finally, hopefully later on in the agenda, we approve our newest member, Justin Gordon, who's been coming to our meetings very diligently and hoping to make it official tonight. That's it.
Thank you. We'll move on to HRC with Ms. Berkeley.
Thank you. We met, our first, our meeting is the first Wednesday of every month. In our last meeting, Lieutenant Brian McIntyre joined us. There was some questions from the community about just mental health training for our officers, and he was happy to share about the lion chair that they do as far as training. And it led to a great discussion about mental health resources and equality within our county and within our, you know, neighborhoods and communities. We do welcome anyone to come to our meetings. Our next meeting is the first Monday of September, or first Wednesday of September. So that is September 3rd, and we meet at the REC Center at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. We'll go back to you for personnel and public safety.
So yes, we do have two agenda items. One is I'll make a motion to consider the request from Justin Gordon for appointment to the Tree Advisory Commission for an open vacancy with a term expiring June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmoneda. Questions on the motion?
Mr. Gordon is here. If anybody, if he wants to introduce himself, he's been very diligent and waited patiently and very communicative with myself and Mr. Carmoneda. So, thank you.
If you want to just step to the mic, why not? You waited this long. I mean, well, I just want to have some fun.
Hi, everyone. I'm Justin Gordon. Yes, I've been volunteering for the Tree Advisory Commission since the beginning of the year. I've gotten to know them. They're great people. Very excited to help contribute more to the Tree Advisory Commission with promoting our urban canopy, you know, helping connect with the public for tree plantings and education. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, seeing no other comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We have lots of trees we wanted to plant. Next up?
And our next motion is a request from Brian Slater for reappointment to the Historical and Agricultural Review Board for a term expiring August 31st, 2028.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on this motion? He's been helping us out for a very long time. So he might be one of the longest ones at this point. So we're happy to see Brian still interested in helping. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Anything else, Ms. Berkeley?
That is it. Thank you. I think we did fill some of those vacancies that were, we were reporting on earlier so that we now have fewer vacancies, which is exciting.
Absolutely. It's hard to get to 100%. For Parks and Rec, we'll go to Ms. Dugan since Mr. Moore was not in attendance that night.
Okay.
Surprised.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the concept of the annual Independence Day celebration taking place on the first Saturday of July each year and to schedule the 2026 celebration on July 4th in honor of the nation's 250th anniversary.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the item?
Did, did anyone want me to explain what this was? Or have you, do you already know?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, over the years, we have had issues trying to figure out when we're going to celebrate, have our fireworks display, and it changes every year. Nobody seems to know. I get questions all the time when it's going to be. I'm sure everybody has fielded these. But doing it this way, we will just always do it on that Saturday night, the first Saturday in July. And that way, you know you can schedule for it. Everybody knows when it's going to be and what it would be, hopefully, because this was just a concept, and we'll need staff's help, and everybody's helped to figure this out. But to do something kind of like the Fall Fest that we already do, where we have the whole parking lot with vendors and with all kinds of things to do. We would have the Rec Center open, hopefully, and then towards the end, from like at 6:00 to about 9:00. And then at that point, people would go to the field where you would get a, you would get the view of the fireworks. But also, we would have, hopefully, a band that we would, not band, but like a DJ, so that he would help explain when it's going to happen. We would hopefully get the mayor to come up and explain, you know, what's going on or... Because we had, there was a lot of confusion this year. Nobody knew which direction to face. We only had one food truck and one water ice truck, and the line was so far back. It was sad. And it was kind of, it was really hot, actually, that day. And a lot of people couldn't go in. And everybody wants to see what the new, a lot of people still, when they come to First Fridays, ask about our new Rec Center. And they want to go over there and see it. And when they were there, I couldn't tell them to just go in and take a look at it. It's right here. And since it wasn't open on that day. But we're still, you know, learning how to deal with the new Rec Center and what to, you know, what events to have there. But this would be very similar to the Fall Fest, and there'd be a lot of stuff to work out otherwise. But at least we wouldn't have to worry about the scheduling of the fireworks and the one for it being, it just happens to be that the Fourth of July is on a Saturday for the 250th anniversary. So that's what the second part of that is.
I like the idea. I like the consistency. I like the predictability. You know, we've talked about this internally on a couple of the other projects, that it's just, keeping consistent makes it easier for planning, so.
And I'd just like, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Dugan for sending it in for me while I was on vacation. I agree also. I grew up in a town that, starting in 1976, had a week-long community days, similar to our Dogwood Festival. Always the first week of July. So it would always cross over the Fourth of July holiday at some point. But the fireworks were always on the last day, the Saturday, which became much more predictable. And, you know, it just made perfect sense. And then, you know, I just appreciate staff and the Rec Department's willingness to say, okay, well, that's day, we're going to staff it a little bit. We're going to, we're going to have the center open. So we'll have to look at budget, of course. But, you know, I think by knowing that we want to do this ahead of time, we can do the outreach to vendors. You know, we can say, you know, there's going to be a lot of people up here. It's very popular fireworks, you know. And then we provide the kind of accommodations, both for bathrooms, comfort, and, you know, food and drink that people would appreciate. And they'll start planning their Fourth of July, maybe around, always going that Saturday.
I have a quick question. First off, I hear a lot from people, you know, why didn't Phoenixville have its Fourth of July fireworks on the Fourth of July? But besides the point? I guess, and it's a question. Having it the first Saturday instead of on July 4th, would that make it easier to get vendors in so we don't have those long lines at the...
Next year, it won't, but...
Yeah, but overall, we did say that it would be helpful. And also, pricing for some things would be better when it's not exactly on the Fourth, or booking things will be easier because there's less conflict.
Okay.
I think in general, it will help. I mean, it's just the one year that it falls on Saturday, it won't, but...
But we also are planning ahead of time enough that it gives us a little edge.
All right. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Anything else out of Parks and Rec? Seeing none.
No, that's all.
We'll move on to policy with Mr. Carmonito.
All right, Mr. President. The first item is a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 222, SADO Part 6 impact statements.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Anything else out of policy?
That's it. Next meeting is next week from today.
Very good. Mr. Weiss with ITTS.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. No action to report at this time. We did not have a July meeting. Our July meeting was canceled. So we'll look forward to seeing everybody one week from tonight in this room at 7:00 p.m. on the 20th.
We won't officially know until September, but you have a designation to announce?
Oh, I didn't, I thought we were waiting until September. But yeah, then, in that case, we are the 63rd? We are the 63rd municipality in the state to be designated as a bird town. So a big thank you to the staff for the work to communicate with the folks that do that. But it identifies us as a community that is friendly to birds through our policies and actions that we take as a, as a community and as a borough. And it's just another exciting piece of forward progress in terms of being better stewards of the environment and the nature that we are blessed to have around us.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Ms. Dugan with Finance.
Everything was already handled in the consent agenda.
Very good. With that, we'll open up our second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make any comment? If you'd like to raise your hand digitally on the Zoom platform and those joining us in the audience tonight, if you want to make your way to the podium, we just ask that you sign in on the paper sheet and provide us with your name and whether you're a business owner, resident, or other, so. Father Peter?
Good evening. Just, I had a, just a quick question about the zoning change and the process for moving forward. It was stated that changing from the town center to the mixed EMI zone would make it easier to modify uses within a particular zone. What, how would that happen as opposed to in the town center? Is it because it's a new, newly created zone that there would be flexibility in it for a period of time and it's locked in? Or, and what, and what feedback would property owners in, you know, this new zone have? You know, considering Holy Ghost is the largest of the parcels affected by the change? Thank you.
So Father, this is public comment. We're not supposed to interact. But could I talk to you after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody on the Zoom? Nope. Okay. With that, we'll close our second and final round of public participation. Any comments, communications from council? I guess. We'll make a special exception and allow the mayor to have a second round?
Sorry. I totally, it was my fault. I just wanted to clarify that the, on September 6th, at 5:00 p.m., is the first responder picnic in conjunction with, no worries.